I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer for Sedgwick County. Commissioners, we have several items to discuss this morning: proclamations, board appointments, and several items for the Department of Public Services. But first, I'd like to remind you of two things. Zubilee is this Saturday. Tickets are still available if you go to scz.org, or you can find a board member who still has tickets available. And then finally, I'd like to bring Dan Pugh up with Emergency Management to talk about National Preparedness Month.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Pugh, I'm the Emergency Manager here in Sedgwick County. And we wanted to just remind everybody here and watching at home that September is National Preparedness Month. So this is the month where we make a concerted effort to work with individuals and households, businesses and nonprofits, governments and first responders, and many others in the community to help everyone understand how you can be better prepared at home. And it couldn't come at a better time. We've had devastation in the South with Hurricane Harvey. Hurricane Irma looks like it's set record speeds and is heading to some American territories and also potentially parts of Florida as well. So the preparedness concepts, they're things that are there all the time, but they're definitely something that we can use this month to help. So I just briefly wanted to talk to you about a couple of things we're doing this month at Sedgwick County. We're partnering with our traditional media outlets to do interviews and put some preparedness messages out there. We're talking about making a plan. We're talking about building a kit. We're talking about staying informed. And so those are the three things that we're really trying to hit and help people to understand how to do each of those things. We're also on social media, partnering with Communications here to push information, small videos every day for Preparedness Month. So you should see some of those on YouTube and connected on some of our social media sites. So Cody Sharvet with our office has been doing those, working with Tracy and others. And those are very good. They're quick. They're about a minute long, but they're just quick and easy action steps that one can take to be better prepared. And of course, we're continuing our partnership with McConnell Air Force Base where we go out, they do a preparedness run, and they do, they hand out information on base housing. And we partner with them to go out and help hand things out, walk door-to-door, provide information for those on base housing, and then take part in their preparedness run. And I don't do much running, but I stand at the end to congratulate everybody when they're done. And we hand out a little information about how they can be better prepared as well. So those are some of the events we have going on and that we're doing for Preparedness Month. So we just wanted to make sure everybody was aware, and I will let you get back to the rest of your meeting.
Dan, thanks for your presentation. And I don't see any comment from Commissioners, but we don't have at this time any response that we're making or partnerships with folks down in Houston.
We did send several county fire employees as part of a task force. They have returned now. They spent four or five days down there helping in the Houston area and with other missions, mostly life-saving missions, swift water and boat rescues. So they have returned now back, and so we don't have any other further teams deployed. But of course, we always stand ready to assist our partners whenever is needed.
Well, thank you for that information, and appreciate it that you are always at the ready. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Kate. I appreciate that introduction and want to welcome everyone who's in the audience today, and welcome those who are watching by way of television. And I want to recognize Honorable Judge Berger, who's here with us today. Thank you for being at our meeting. With that, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, September 6, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Gary Brooks, Aldersgate United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
It's a privilege to be here this morning, and I wish you all the best as you meet today. Let us pray. We greet you this morning, O God, and thank you for the benefits of another day. May your will be done here on earth as it is in heaven. We seek your help in the face of hurricanes, floods, fires, and the rhetoric of war. Forgive us where we have not helped our neighbors and cause us to see ways to reach out in love and compassion. Grant our commissioners the wisdom to discern right paths of action, the courage to pursue them in the face of criticism, and the resolve to make the world a better place. Bless their meeting this day and bless all of us citizens that as we work and strive together, we might sculpt the landscape of life in good and beautiful ways. This we pray in the name of the Lord of Life, even Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Brooks, thanks for being here this morning. First item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Randzow.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Enru.
Present.
Next item.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we've had one person sign up to speak this morning, Ms. Greenwood. If you'd want to step to the podium and state your name, and we'll allow you five minutes to speak.
My name is Ms. Greenwood. I am married to Sean Patrick Desmo, San Juan Islands. I am my father's Mr. and Mrs. Zalma Greenwood, firstborn. Mother's father is Isaac Theodore Philback, WWII, '16, Purple Heart, first in our tribe to be numbered. We do not have to carry a number in America. That is a misleading note somebody has placed on the board someplace. We do all pay our taxes. We do all have appropriate recording with birth certificates with appropriate people that are approved by the United States, Washington DC, to record the births. Live births can be recorded at home with an ambulance there when the umbilical cord is cut. My last grandchild was stolen while I was on a mission to Washington State to bring back a young girl that had been left on the street by her supposed adopted parent. I will not disclose no names, for I have been her caregiver for a long time. It took a whole crew to get her back here, to where she wasn't in a hospital having a pickline put in her. Now, when I got, when I arrived back here, I didn't like the greeting I received by some, I'll say, uninformed people. So those who have their double books and ways of doing in Sedgwick County, which affects the city police, they will no longer do this because they are learning to respect these good men. And the ones that have done this, they are under review for even having a degree from the schools they allegedly acquired the degree from. And I know they all have a degree. They will have their high school diploma. Their next venture in life will be to Salt Lake, Utah City. And nobody can touch interest bank. There is no trust fund there for anybody. The United States government is the one that has the trust and the money to take care of people. My mother and father's signature is on my bank account, which I lock down with the Bankers' Good Association. I'm from a family of farmers. Clean water is a must. They've been messing with the water waves. And God has a way of cleansing and helping us with the water without taking life. Now, Florida, it's always stormed in there a bit, okay? The West Coast is pretty calm. It's been the way of life, and the good news is Yellowstone Park, Old Faithful, is still spouting off at the same time. So that means we haven't destroyed the earth yet, okay? But quit trying to poison us with things in the water and food that you say, "Oh, they can take so much percentage of it." We're saying no. We're taking it out. We're producing our own food. We are managing to feed ourselves and quit taking the trading stance of food down so low they cannot afford to buy their own underwear and also cannot afford fresh fruit. Oh, we like the canned fruit, but where is the butter at that should be in the federal packages along with the powdered milk? That is all I have to say. They are broke. They are the national debt. And America is, still has a triple-one-A rating with the United Nations worldwide. We track the money down like my brother, Arthur Greenwood Jr., in Family Court. Follow the money. Well, we did, and look who we found. Two-hundred-and-forty thousand that misled some young people and some elders the wrong way. Well, now, I'm not going to uncover them or disclose them on national TV, but in time, their name and all the different names they utilize will be told with their faces, not to be told on, but how much America loves them, and we're going to keep them safe from a lot of people worldwide that are angry, that happens to know my dad. He is the teacher for teachers of new radio technology three times around the world early '60s. And we're farmers.
Ms. Greenwood, your time has expired.
Okay. Well, enough said. The law was placed. No subliminal messages or radio waves, especially with mine alter and controlling trinklers. I'm not going before my time. Oh, yeah, they killed my parents, but don't cry. I did not put them in the ground just because I had to wait till my dad said, "Okay, she can stay in Austin." And it had to be with God's plan. Thank you, sir. I'm going to go feed who I can on my meager budget, and I love you all just the way you are. And it was not done in a [inaudible].
Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, I don't think we have anyone else on public agenda who's asked to speak, so we'll ask the clerk to call the next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring National Recovery Month.
Commissioners, I have a proclamation for your consideration. Whereas the focus of National Recovery Month this September is to join the Voices for Recovery, strengthen families and communities with a focus on bringing people together to share real-life experiences of the power of recovery from substance use disorders and/or mental health disorders. And whereas in 2015, there were a total of 3,471 admissions for addiction treatment in Sedgwick County, 63% male and 37% female. At a time of admission, 31% reported their primary substance of abuse was alcohol. 9% were unemployed. 10% were homeless. 30% reported having a mental health disorder. Excuse me. And 5% of females reported they were pregnant. And whereas Calm Care of Sedgwick County promotes the societal benefits of prevention, treatment, and recovery from substance use, and we applaud the contributions and dedication of treatment and service providers across Sedgwick County and the state of Kansas. And whereas there are millions of Americans whose lives have been transformed and can now lead normal lives, Recovery Month's message is that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David M. Enru, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 2017 as National Recovery Month. Mental health and substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide, but with the commitment and support of our community, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives and recovery. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the Board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enru.
Aye. And here receiving the proclamation this morning is Bonnie Kimpel. She's with Calm Care Addiction Treatment Services.
Thank you, Chairman Enru, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm Bonnie Kimpel, Program Manager for Calm Care of Sedgwick County's Addiction Treatment Services. It's my privilege today to accept this proclamation on behalf of Sedgwick County Treatment Community and our fellow citizens who have in the past or who are currently in seeking treatment services for both treatment and recovery services for substance usage and mental health conditions for themselves or their loved ones. National Recovery Month is a celebration of the effectiveness of prevention, treatment, and recovery services that are provided across our county and state, and recognizes that recovery is a process. The road to recovery takes a lot of effort and at times can be pretty difficult, but the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental health and substance use disorders are worth the effort for the individual, their families, and our communities. I'm excited to have with us today a young lady who's going to share her story, a brief part of her struggle, and the part that celebrates the path of recovery.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jenna. Excuse me. My name is Jenna, and I've been a client at Calm Care Addiction Treatment Services off and on since 2009. It began when I was placed in the drug court diversion program after being pulled over twice in one week with weed and paraphernalia in the vehicle. I graduated that program after a year of attendance in group therapy and random UAs. I'd love to tell you my problems with drug and alcohol abuse ended there, but unfortunately, my story is a long way from short and sweet. My addiction progressed from weed and alcohol to cocaine, pills, and meth. Personally, methamphetamine was by far the easiest hook with the longest line, and it nearly left me drowning in a lifestyle that embarrassed me, to the point where I avoided looking at my own reflection. Meth took me back to Calm Care ATS when my parents gave me an ultimatum: seek help or be homeless. Getting help with addiction is nothing like flipping a switch and fixing yourself, but it is both the longest and most beneficial process I have ever worked through. I stand here today with nearly 18 months of clean time, without which I would surely be six feet under by now. Outside of my battles with chemical dependency, I am diagnosed bipolar and spent years of my adult life resisting medication and talk therapy. No one likes to admit they need help, but Calm Care has managed to help me find plants and solutions in all aspects of my struggle. Staying on my medication has become second nature, but when I was failing to stay on track, I used Calm Care Crisis Center to regain my footing. I needed hospitalization more than once, and each time I was released, my therapy resumed at Calm Care ATS with an amazing team of counselors who truly care where I am and how I am to this day, long after graduation. I spent a year on non-reporting probation, and the consequences could have been far worse had I not been seeking addiction treatment already. It was a long struggle to admit my life had become completely unmanageable, and even a longer road to maintain a quality of life I enjoyed living. Looking back on it now, I wouldn't change a thing. Once I began to stabilize my mental health and gain clean time, it was difficult for me to find the motivation and opportunity to return to work full-time. I had a large gap of unemployment and became discouraged after failing to find a new job on my own. I learned about another Calm Care program, supported employment, and once I got accepted, I gained another teammate who not only helped me create a resume, but drove me to put in applications and boosted my confidence every step of the way. I found a few temporary jobs, including a clerk with the election office, but I was motivated through this program to continue searching. Finally, in May of this year, I was hired full-time. I've been there four months now, and while I battle my own insecurities on a daily basis, I work hard and always try to do the next right thing. My old life and habits aren't far behind me, but I can say with confidence that they'll remain in the past. I don't see myself as a grown-up, but with a strong support system surrounding me, I'm growing up into a functional member of society. Functioning is just the beginning of what I need to achieve in life. Happiness is a struggle personally, as well as promoting the contentment of my family and close friends. While I've burned numerous bridges in the last decade, all is not lost, and there's still room for repair. My best advice to those who struggle with addiction is this: work towards getting comfortable but not complacent in your own skin. Each addict creates a unique path toward recovery, but I found the guidance and stability offered through Calm Care ATS has helped me redirect my focus from escaping through addiction to success in sobriety. When I'm at my lowest, the serenity prayer resets my mind and calms my stress. It applies to everyone, not just addicts. God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Thank you for your time this morning.
Jenna, we want to thank you for being here this morning and having the courage to share with us your story and your journey. Clearly, you are an intelligent, articulate person.
Thank you.
And I'm optimistic that you're going to continue on this road to recovery and continue to be a contributing member of our society. But once again, I know it took a lot of courage, and we thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item B, proclamation declaring National Suicide Prevention Week.
Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read for your consideration. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 18 minutes with an average of 44,193 deaths by suicide a year, and whereas in our country, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for 15- to 24-year-olds, and is the 10th-leading cause of death for people of all ages. And whereas psychological studies have consistently found that the overwhelming majority of people who die by suicide, 90% or more, had mental disorder at the time of their deaths, and often these disorders had not been recognized, diagnosed, or adequately treated. And whereas far too many Sedgwick County residents and Kansans die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable. In 2015, 68 Sedgwick County residents died by suicide. And whereas the mission of Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition is to promote and implement evidence-based approaches, local research, and community change to reduce the impact of suicide with the ultimate goal of zero suicides in Sedgwick County. And whereas in Sedgwick County, help is available by calling the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Hotline 24 hours a day, seven days a week at 316-660-7500. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David M. Enru, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 10th to 16th, 2017 as National Suicide Prevention Week. The topic of suicide will continue to challenge us all to increase our awareness and education, and I call upon the residents of our community to join me in learning to recognize the signs of someone at risk, taking those signs seriously, and knowing how to respond. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the Board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enru.
Aye. And here to accept the proclamation is Mary Jones, and she is President of the Suicide Prevention Coalition.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition, we'd like to thank you for your continued support of this proclamation and your continued promotion of the awareness of this significant public health issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary, for being here. We appreciate your efforts on behalf of those folks who struggle this issue. I think it's, as the proclamation stated, you know, we can recognize the signs, and we can respond, and we just need to take the time to be aware of those folks, whether it's family members or not, who indicate some of those signs, and be willing to respond, to reach out and try to help. And we can call the Suicide Prevention Center if necessary, and we can simply just sit down and talk to them, which will go a long way towards helping overcome the crises. But 85 deaths by suicide is just too many. It saddens us, and I just thank you for your work in trying to overcome this issue in our society.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C, proclamation declaring National Forensic Science Week.
Commissioners, another proclamation for your consideration. Whereas forensic science is a vital public service, and access to quality forensic analysis dramatically improves the investigation of criminal activity, leading to the exoneration of the innocent and the prosecution of the guilty. And whereas forensic science plays a critical role in public outreach and crime prevention, and that role is evolving within the criminal justice community. And whereas crime scene investigators, forensic examiners, forensic scientists, and forensic technicians provide unbiased, accurate, and reliable analysis of evidence. And whereas numerous professional organizations across the country have recognized September 17th to September 23rd, 2017, as National Forensic Science Week. And whereas the dedicated and hard-working individuals that compose the Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center are worthy of recognition for their commitment to proper scientific and medical investigations to support the cause of justice. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David M. Enru, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 17th to 23rd, 2017, as National Forensic Science Week. Throughout Sedgwick County, encourage all residents of Sedgwick County to learn more about the importance of forensic science and show their sincere appreciation for the people, technologies, and facilities that make reliable forensic science possible in our community. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the Board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enru.
Aye. And accepting the proclamation this morning is Dr. Tim Roy, who's the Director of our Regional Forensic Science Center.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for this proclamation. I'm here to accept this on behalf of our team. It is a team effort of scientists, physicians. We spend countless hours examining tens of thousands of pieces of evidence to support the criminal justice system, the identification, adjudication of crime. You've allowed me to assemble a fantastic team of scientists, physicians, to move forward with this work, and I just want to thank you for your ongoing support, allowing us to do the job for the citizens of Sedgwick County. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Roy, thank you. We appreciate the work of your whole team at the Regional Forensic Science Center. We know that it is very technical and that with new technologies that come along and with new ways that people commit crime of one kind or another, that your office is somewhat overloaded even with work to do, trying to just keep up with the problem. So just want you to communicate to your team that we do appreciate them, and we know that you're an important part of our community.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item D, Resolution Appointing Dr. Michael Berger to the Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board in the Education Position.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. I think Items D and E can be voted on at the same time. Item D is a resolution appointing Dr. Michael Berger to the Community Corrections Advisory Board in the Education Position. This position had been held by Dr. Jody Beeson, whose term expired on September first. Dr. Berger's term would end on September five of two thousand and nineteen, and he is present to be sworn in. Item E is a resolution reappointing Mr. Ignacio Ayala to that same board in the at-large, in one of the at-large positions. Mr. Ayala has been serving on the board already, so this is a reappointment. His new term would expire on September eight of two thousand and nineteen, and I understand he's not present. I would urge adoption of these two resolutions, Items D and E, and then swear in Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. What's the will of the board?
Move to adopt the resolution. Both resolutions.
For Items D and E, thank you.
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And Dr. Berger is here. Berger is here. If you'd like to step forward, he'll be sworn.
Good morning, Commissioner. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board, so help me God.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Community Corrections Advisory Board, so help me God.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity. I look forward to making a contribution on the board. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your willingness to serve. We have several advisory boards that offer input to the county commission, and we take your work and your advice seriously, so we appreciate citizens who are willing to serve. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item F, Accept the Resignation of Alex Malugan from the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, again. Items F and G can be voted on together. Item F is a resolution accepting the resignation of Alex Malugan from the Advisory Council on Aging. He had been Commissioner O'Donnell's appointment, but he is unable to continue his work on that committee. Item G is a resolution appointing Ms. Jamie Brown to fill that vacancy, to replace Ms. Malugan, and Commissioner O'Donnell is recommending that Ms. Brown be appointed. Her term would expire on April eleven, two thousand and twenty-one, and I understand she is present to be sworn in. I would urge adoption of both of these resolutions, Items F and G, and then swear in Ms. Brown.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I move we adopt the resolution, but I do not think Jamie is here today.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Motion and a second to accept a resignation and make an appointment. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And Ms. Brown is not here?
Right.
Okay. Then we will, she'll be sworn at the appropriate time, and we'll go to the next item, please.
Item H, Resolution Appointing Cindy Lee to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. This resolution would appoint Ms. Cindy Lee to the Solid Waste Management Committee Board in Position Number Ten, which is the County Recycling Position. This had been held, this position had been held by Joe Oliver, who is not in that position anymore. Ms. Lee's term would expire when she leaves employment with Sedgwick County, and I would urge adoption of this resolution, and I understand she is present to be sworn.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And Ms. Lee is here to be sworn in.
All right. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Solid Waste Committee, so help me God.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with the committee and the citizens of Sedgwick County.
Well, thank you for your willingness to serve, and, once again, I'd say that we appreciate citizens who are willing to invest time in the advisory boards, that, once again, I'll say that we do take their advice seriously, so thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
New Business. Item I, Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition, two thousand and seventeen Annual
Good morning, Chairman Unruh, Commissioners. I'm Nicole Claus, and I am a psychologist with the KU School of Medicine and a member of the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And I'm here this morning to share with you some of our most recent data and trends regarding suicide rates in Sedgwick County. And first, I want to acknowledge that this data is available through a collaboration with the Sedgwick County Division of Health and the Regional Forensic Science Center, so I want to acknowledge their efforts and their contribution. So, in two thousand and sixteen, there were a total of ninety-one suicide deaths in Sedgwick County, and this comes to a rate of seventeen point nine per hundred thousand Sedgwick County residents, and this is the highest rate on record since we started tracking these data sixteen years ago. Here you can see that this rate is significantly higher than the national trends and that our suicide rates in Sedgwick County tend to be higher than the national trends on average. Sedgwick County is the blue line there, and national rates are in gray. National data also tend to lag a couple of years behind our local data. So firearm deaths continue to be the most common method of suicide in Sedgwick County, and this is consistent with national data. And so here you can see that over the past few years, our rates of firearm deaths have kind of fluctuated, but been in a similar range. The second-leading cause of suicide is hanging deaths, and the third-most common cause is drug overdoses, which increased this past year. Our twenty-five-to-fifty-four-year-old residents make up the largest portion of suicide deaths. And here, when you look at the past few years, we can see that our young adults, our twenty-five-to-thirty-four-year-olds, have shown a significant increase in suicide rates over the past few years. And so when I plot that over a longer span, you can see that there's been a steady increase in deaths in that age group by suicide. Males die at a significantly higher rate than females by suicide, and this is consistent with the past several years and with national trends. Here, when we look at the race and ethnicity of our suicide deaths, we find that seventy-five percent of people who've died of suicide were non-Hispanic white. And when we look at suicide rates, which are adjusted according to the population, we find that our Hispanic and Black populations have shown increased rates of suicide in the past year as well, but the non-Hispanic whites continue to have the highest suicide rate. So as Chairman Unruh nicely summarized earlier, the, one of the things we can all do to prevent suicide is to be aware of warning signs for suicide, take it seriously, and know the local resources to get help. We have a twenty-four-hour community hotline and community crisis center. And we also have several activities coming up that community members can get involved with to increase their awareness and show support for people struggling with suicidal thoughts, including some walks and vigils and our Party for Prevention that the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition is hosting. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for that update. I don't see, well, we do have a request from a Commissioner. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just, I want to say thank you for the data. It's sobering to see these numbers and appreciate the report this morning. I'd like to get a copy of that PowerPoint if it's possible to do that.
Absolutely. It's here.
And then, second of all, I'm just curious, but there has been a trend happening in the nation, the opioid overdoses. I'm just curious if someone has an accidental overdose by misuse of drugs like that, and it's not an intentional suicide. Do you differentiate that in the data?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Those are not ruled suicide deaths. Those are ruled accidental overdoses.
All right. Well, that's great.
However, we also know that a significant portion of those who die of suicide do have substances, whether it's drugs or alcohol, in their system at the time of death.
All right. Well, good. Thank you for that. And I just want to say, some of those, some of those slides were somewhat shocking. I'm surprised to see the, some of the demographics of some of those slides. If I understand correctly, you said seventy-eight percent male.
Mm-hmm.
And that just really surprises me. It's such a tremendous difference in the sex between male and female. That would be such a difference there. And then some of the race, racial differences are also very surprising to me. So, anyway, I'd like to see that, have those slides and contemplate that, and thank you for your information this morning.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. I had one question. Can you identify a reason that there was such a significant uptick in the population twenty-five to thirty-four, I believe, that increased so much in the last year or so? Is there, is there, is there something that you can identify, excuse me, as a reason for that?
With the data that we have, we haven't been able to identify one particular reason. You know, over the time period that we've seen this increase, I wonder if economic issues have affected this age group in particular ways, but it's kind of hard to tell. But I think, you know, paying attention to the issue, addressing mental health issues would be especially important in that age group.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you for the report, and I assume that you'll send that to all of us, that we can kind of look at that data, but appreciate your work in continuing with suicide prevention, and it needs to be, needs to be talked about so that we can all be alert and help. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, see, we need a motion to receive and file, I think.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And next item, please.
Item J, Agreement with the Kansas Department on Aging and Disability Services and the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging for the Senior Care Act Program, fiscal year two thousand and eighteen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Annette Graham, Division on Aging. What I bring before you today is an agreement with the Kansas Department on Aging and Disability Services, and it is between KADADs and the Central Plains Area Agencies on Aging to provide for the Senior Care Act Program for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. This is an agreement with the state to provide this. The allocation of funding is based on the funding formula. There are eleven area agencies on aging, and there is a funding formula that allocates those funds across those area agencies on aging based on their populations and demographics related to that senior population. This program provides in-home services to residents of Kansas sixty years of age and older who meet the functional limitation criteria for a nursing home level of care. The Senior Care Act Program was established by the Kansas Legislature back in the early nineteen eighties with the goal to assist older Kansans who have these limitations to remain in their own homes as long as possible. The program is targeted to individuals that are not eligible for Medicaid, their pre-Medicaid eligibility, and it really is to help them extend their resources to remain in their homes and communities as long as possible. This program is provided in the three-county region of Butler, Harvey, and Sedgwick County, and it provides a multitude of services to help those seniors. So it is, again, for seniors aged sixty and older. These seniors are assessed for their functional eligibility, and there is case management services provided that determines their plan of care to provide those services. Services are targeted to meet the specific needs of the individuals, and services available through the program include not only the case management and the assessment, but also attendant care, which is basically assistance with personal care, like bathing, toileting, medication management, dressing, and feeding, transferring, and also through homemaker services, where things such as meals shopping, meals preparation, managing money, setting up appointments, scheduling things, lighthouse work, and laundry. Additionally, there is a personal emergency response management and installation, that is a system that provides twenty-four-hour emergency assistance with the push of a button, and it also provides for custom care, and that includes specific purchases that will allow and assist the individual in maintaining their independence and home modifications, incontinent supplies, things like that. This program started July first, two thousand and seventeen, and goes through June thirtieth. There was a delay in getting the contract to us because of the legislature was delayed in their budgeting, and so it took a longer for the Kansas Department of Aging to get that to us to finalize. The total program budgeted cost are one million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. That includes state funds of one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. It includes co-pays. This program does, it has a sliding scale, and seniors are required to pay based on their ability. We look at their annual income and also at liquid assets to determine that. And then there's also a required match. Our match does not change based on the funding of the state. It is set at sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That was already included in our two thousand and eighteen budget request. And then we have estimated program income, which is the co-pay at fifty thousand, which brings the total resources to that one million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Now, last year, this program did suffer a significant cut in funding due to the state legislative, the state budget issues. There was a thirty-five percent reduction. There was a lot of legislative advocacy that happened on behalf of this program, and as a result of that, we were, they were successful in restoring those cuts. So, last year, we had a thirty-five percent reduction. We did reduce our budgets, and we had to reduce services to individuals, and our waiting list for this program did significantly grow. That budget has been restored with this. Also, when we had that cut, we did lay off three individuals, three of our staff. So with this agreement that I bring before you, we do have that increased budgetary request in there. We also have included a staffing table change, which would be the addition of two positions. One is a full-time case manager, three, and one is a full-time grant coordinator position. Sufficient budget authority is already included in the two thousand and seventeen budget, but additional budget authority is requested for the two thousand and eighteen budget. Currently, for this program, we have close to one hundred and seventy, about a hundred and seventy seniors on the program. We do have a waiting list of close to two hundred. We are starting the process of going through that waiting list and doing the assessments to add people back onto this program and to meet those pent-up needs that we see across our region. So with this, I would request that you approve the agreement, authorize the establishment of additional budget authority in the two thousand and eighteen budget, and the addition of two FTE positions, and authorize the chairman to sign, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Annette. Commissioners, we have a question from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, can you talk about the waiting list, how it changed after the legislature? I guess... I guess they reduced the budget and then increased the budget. You talked about that. So has the waiting list, was it lower before, and it went up because of that?
Yes, it did. And we also did have to, because of the size of that reduction, we did have to move some people off of the program. But what we've seen during this year-plus of that transition is some of those people on the waiting list ended up in nursing homes or no longer needed the services, or they passed away. So that waiting list is kind of a moving target because of what happens. With senior population, they typically don't try to access services till kind of late when they really, really need them, so we see a lot of change. If people don't access services and they don't have that available, they can end up in a nursing home, or their health condition deteriorates, or they have a fall. So we see a lot of movement within that waiting list, but we did see a growth in that.
Is there a way that people can find out about the program? I mean, is it advertised in some way that seniors would naturally come across the information for assistance?
We do put out the information. We have our call center, and people do -- we work with a lot of professionals, so we get that information out. We hear a lot from home health agencies, from assisted livings, from caregivers, even from hospitals as they're transitioning out of hospitals once they've had a change in situation.
As people are listening on the television, for example, if they were interested in this and wanted to get more information, do you have a number that they could call?
Yes. That is 1-855-200-2372.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we would approve the agreement and authorize the establishment of additional budget authority in the 2018 budget and the addition of two FTE positions, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. Thank you, Annette.
Next item, please.
Item K, Consideration of a Resolution and Agreement between Sedgwick County and the City of Wichita for Transfer of the Sedgwick County Housing Authority Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program to Wichita Housing Authority.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. I'm here on the proposed transfer of the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program from the Sedgwick County Housing Authority to the Wichita Housing Authority. Presently, the Wichita Housing Authority currently operates a Section 8 program within the city limits of Wichita. Meanwhile, Sedgwick County, the Sedgwick County Housing Authority, operates as the public housing authority throughout the remainder of Sedgwick County, and then also in Harvey County and Butler County. And what's probably a gross oversimplification of the duties of a public housing authority, essentially, they have to work with tenants to ensure they meet the federal regulations for qualifying to receive a voucher to go towards rent on those. They also will work with interested landlords and ensure that they, again, meet the HUD regulations. And then during the course of the residential rental agreements, the public housing authorities have several administrative duties and responsibilities and oversight functions that they have to perform. And discussions have been held recently between city and county staff members, and I think there's a thought towards if it could make sense to potentially consolidate housing authority. Essentially, there are the same regulations that apply, whether it's Wichita Housing Authority or the Sedgwick County Housing Authority. And more specifically, the thought was if there was to be some type of consolidation, it could be more sensible to have that be a consolidation to where the county would transfer its housing authority to the city, because there's roughly an eight-to-one ratio on the number of vouchers the city of Wichita has in their housing authority to the Sedgwick County Housing Authority. And the thought is that economies of scale would make it more efficient in order if the city were to handle that. Secondly, the thought was that there would also be some, I guess, more ease for landlords and tenants to have one point of contact than the county as opposed to two. As a result, you know, that's kind of why this whole item is in front of you today. The next question is, well, how would a transfer occur? There is a process that HUD has put together on these matters. There are really three documents that would have to be approved by you today in order to effectuate that transfer. The first is an agreement to be reached with the city of Wichita for the transfer. The second would be a resolution to show the county's intent to transfer its housing authority to the city of Wichita, which would, that's a requirement of the HUD procedures, but also under Kansas Housing Law. That is under KSA 172348, a municipality can transfer its housing authority to another municipality. And the third item would be a letter that would be proposed to be signed by the Executive Director of the Sedgwick County Housing Authority, Ms. Annette Graham, and then, secondly, it would be signed by the chairman. And it would state the reasons for the transfer, which I've already indicated those. I've already kind of talked about what the resolution would contain, and I think more or less what the agreement or what the letter would include, but let me make a few comments on the proposed agreement that's in front of you. It would propose to have the city act as a subcontractor on this for the Sedgwick County Housing Authority from October 1st through December 31st. HUD only approves these transfers on effective January 1st or July 1st of each year. So it would be a subcontract for the final quarter of 2017, and then if HUD approves the item, when this would go to them, they have 30 days to approve or deny it once it's submitted, then effective January 1st of 2018. The city would be the public housing authority for the remainder of Sedgwick County. Upon approval by HUD, the county would pay the city a one-time fee of $35,000. This one-time fee would be intended to cover some of the transition costs, and I know during the city's presentation yesterday, they indicated that they would ultimately plan to add one additional staff member, so I imagine some of that money would go to that as well. The city would also receive all the HUD administrative fees that the federal government provides on those agreements as well. The Wichita Housing Authority would be responsible for administering the program under the same rules and regulations the county currently has to follow on these. The city did approve this item yesterday, seven to zero, and Harvey County and Butler County, county commissions are going to take up resolutions next week to consider their transfer of authority to the Wichita Housing Authority as well. The recommended action is to approve the agreement, authorize the chairman to sign it, approve the resolution, and authorize the chairman and the Sedgwick County Housing Authority Executive Director to sign the letter to HUD. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Justin. We do have a question from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the presentation this morning. I've been thinking about this, and I did listen to the meeting by the city yesterday, and they made, I guess, a term that I would like to use here as well. It's functional consolidation. I think this is good for us to functionally consolidate where it makes sense, and this is a move towards more efficiency. So the program, I think, is arguably going to be able to provide more for less tax dollars, and so that's a good move. Can you talk about, how many employees do we have in Sedgwick County that are providing the service currently, do you know?
I think Annette Graham might be better suited to answer that question.
Okay.
We currently have one case manager. We did have two case managers, but one of those was hired onto a different position within the Division of Aging. So she now is a program manager, I mean, a unit director for mobility and meal levy programs, but because she has that experience in housing program, she is currently continuing to assist with that. When the program came over, there were three staff that were with the program.
And so continuing this, are we going to have to lay a day off? Are we going to reassign someone?
Yes, there will be one, there will be one layoff.
There will be one layoff.
Yes, there will be.
Okay. That's good to know that, I guess. I am a little bit concerned about the fact that I think there is some Section 8 housing outside of Wichita. I want to ensure that, I guess, the rest of the county continues to get, I guess, access to Section 8 housing opportunities if there are some out there. I'm considering Oaklawn specifically. It's in my district, and I know that there probably is some Section 8 housing there. I didn't get that data. I did ask for that, but I have not seen that data just yet, but I would like to know, is there any type of reporting? Are we able to access data regarding how the housing is distributed around the county? Is that data going to be available to us?
Okay. I think I did send that, maybe you just didn't get that yet, but there, when we looked at our records currently, there are one, there's one tenant in the Oaklawn area, and there, no, there are two tenants and one landlord, I believe, but I did send you that data. HUD does, for their monthly reporting, they only require reporting based on total numbers of vouchers. It is not broke down by region or county. So I'm, I, the system does not track it that way.
Okay. All right. I don't think I have any other questions. Mr. Chairman, I would be willing to make a motion to take the recommended action.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there further comment or discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Justin.
Next item, please.
Item L, Selection of Voting Delegate and Alternates for the Kansas Association of Counties 42nd Annual Conference.
Commissioners, each year at the KAC conference, we need to have a voting delegate, and they ask for two alternates, and so we need to choose those representatives of Sedgwick County today. I've tried to talk to most of you about who might be willing to serve, and I would like to recommend that Commissioner Howell be the voting delegate and Commissioner Dennis be an alternate. Are there any other suggestions? I would make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second. Now, is there a conversation or comment about the motion? Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say I appreciate the recognition and the trust from the commission to represent the B.O.C.C. from Sedgwick County at the KAC, and I look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you. Any further comment or question? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item M, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on August 31st, 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting that was held on August 31st for the Board of Bids and Contracts results in three items, and the first item that we bring to you is the background screening services for the Division of Human Resources. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from National Screening Bureau and establish contract pricing for two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number two is the SAP Basis Monitoring and Support, and this is for the Division of Information Technology and Support Services. Recommendation is to accept the quote from First Basis Consulting LLC at the rate of $2,900 per month and establish contract pricing for time and materials at $100 per hour, and this contract will be for one year with four one-year options to renew. Our final item, item three, which is weed chemicals for Noxious Weeds Department. Recommendation for this is to accept the low bid for items one through six and award that to Van D Supply Company. The low bid for items seven and eight award to Red River Specialties LLC, and the low bid for item number nine to Site One Landscape Supply, and these will be for an initial purchase totaling $30,114.08 and establish contract pricing for one year. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these three items.
All right. Commissioners, do we have any question or comment for Joe on these bid board items? Seeing none, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We had approved the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
No.
Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Joe. And next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda items November through Victor.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
And next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
I think we have no legislative issues to discuss this morning, to discuss this morning, Commissioners, so I think now we're ready for other. So are there any other items of interest or comment that Commissioners would like to make at this time? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, we have a Veterans Day Parade coming up on November the 9th this year, and it is Veterans Day that day, and we want to make sure that we have folks out there to support the Veterans Day Parade. I am on the board that is setting up that parade, but I think it's important that we recognize our veterans and the contributions that they've made to our United Nation, and so I urge everyone to join us on November the 9th to recognize veterans of our United States service.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thanks for giving us a warning early enough that we can plan for that, so thank you. Are there any other comments? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thursday night, we're going to have our second meeting down in Hayesville with KDHE for the water contamination issue, and they've actually included the county this time, and we'll have members from the Environmental Department down there, along with state legislators and members from KDHE. So hopefully, residents down in the area of impact are going to have some more questions answered, so Thursday, 6 o'clock, at the Alternative Learning Center.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move to the next item. I don't think we have an executive session. And Commissioners, if there's nothing else to bring up before us this morning, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.